All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll go ahead and get this meeting called or ordered. I'd like to thank everybody for being here with us for November Board of Commissioners meeting, our regular meeting. Got a couple of announcements before we dive straight into the agenda. First is tomorrow, we'll have a new website going live. You can go to the existing website address that we've been working with Civic Plus to try to get much more user friendly. So the agenda's minutes, links to the videos of each of the meetings that Pickens has on there will be there. So we're going to be working on continuing to improve it. I want to recognize Miranda back there and she's not going to stand up because I'm going to embarrass her, but she's been working tirelessly on trying to get that up and running. So the scheduled time is 11 o'clock tomorrow. It's technology. So we expect it to be on by midnight tomorrow from the 11:00 a.m. expected time that we have going. Also announcement, obviously, we all know next week is Thanksgiving, so we will have the office closure on Thursday and Friday for the employees to be able to spend time with their families for Thanksgiving. And we hope everyone has an incredible Thanksgiving at that time. So as we move on into the agenda, I'd like to call on Kirk Anderson, if you would, to lead us in our invocation. And following that, I've got a special guest, Mr. Tony Peace. If you lead us in our pledge of allegiance to following Mr. Anderson.
That's right. Thank you, Father. Let's gather again, Lord. Please, Lord, watch over these proceedings. Please, Lord, let cool heads prevail. Please, Lord, lead us and guide us, give us discernment. Please, Lord, watch over our leaders and let these proceedings go as you would have them too, Lord. Watch over all those who are out in the field tonight, Lord. Set those who are affecting us. Lead us and guide us along your way. In thy name we pray. Amen.
The next item of our agenda is to go into the approval of the agenda. I do have one amendment under new business item, a letter G, would be the removal of M-723A and M-6150P, Pickens County Airport. When we get to that item, we'll be able to explain the details on there. That's the only amendment that I do have for consideration on the agenda. The other, do you have any further? With that, I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Question different. Second motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? None, all in favor? None opposed? Let's go. We will move into our agenda. We do have a few different employee recognitions. I'm going to turn the floor over to Chief Preacher. I know he's got a special presentation he wants to make tonight and let him lead us.
Thank you, Chairman, Lord. You know, it's fire and emergency services organization. You start to obviously save property, lives. And, you know, I can tell you, my team, we do it every week, you know? And if I brought everybody in here with everything that we ran, that we run, we'd be constantly busy. But every now and then, you get one of them old crap calls. You're trained in every aspect of what you have to use, but it's like, oh, no, what are we going to do on this one? So on October 7th, we received a call that I think everybody participating in that event was a resident or remember for a long time. And it was brought to my attention first by the person that sent a thank you letter to me through Facebook action. That was Mr. Chris Sandrich, and he's here tonight. A sick, unknown call. We get those every week. You never know what you're going out of. But I think these guys and gals signed out quick. You know, this is not going to be one of those we run through every week. So tonight, I want to just give you, introduce what we went to, and it was basically a rescue out in the woods, talking about creek. I got, I had to get your chief Simmons to come in to give you more detail about the event. I got Captain Elrod, he's going to come in tonight and tell you briefly what it went through. And I want to read you the thank you letter that I received from Mr. Sandrich. And then I've got some unit, this new service awards presenting, one of those members that got this guy out of the woods. It was very, very challenging. I'll let Captain Elrod at this point explain what they did that night.
As you first said, October 7th, 1:09 in the morning, we're dispatched out to a individual in the woods who possibly having a heart attack. When we all arrived there, was we ever surprised? Luckily, he had a dog and we had some garments and tracking that some of his people that was with him had. And we figured out he was 675 yards from where we were at to where he was. The terrain was about 70 degrees. And he was probably about anywhere from 1,500 to 2,000 feet down a ravine. Initially, made six, and one of him, volunteer fire department, went into the individual and got to him and kind of give us a guide of how the terrain was going to be and how it was. So at that point, we had a UTV. We pretty much had to take a chainsaw and a UTV and cut trees to get to him. We got there, Lieutenant Elder had already went out ahead of us. He kind of helped guide us in also. And so we got down there and then we really realized what kind of task we had. I've been doing this next year, coming up in 2026, 30 years, I never set up a rope rig that big in my whole life. So, and we had to do it twice. Luckily, about the last 100 foot, we could hook the rope to the UTV with a winch and pull him up because at that point, we were all about shot. Ladies and gentlemen, right here, they were with him. They were a very big help to us getting him out. I don't know if we could have done it without them. Which I had to think about, everything we could do as far as getting the GSP helicopter, use a long line to get him out. We called for medical helicopters, but it was cloudy. And so that pretty much knocked that out. At that point, we knew we was just going to have to do the work. But nobody minded. We all got in there as a team and done what we were supposed to do. Was it challenging? Yes. Took us six hours, but you see what that fella right there? He's here with us today. He was very patient with us. These guys right here were a great big help. It was, it was challenging, but we got a good, this group right back here, I'd put them on anything they wanted to do. And I'm glad to see them here. Normally, this don't happen. We worked on a lot of people, but we don't ever see them again. But guess what? He's sitting right here and these two guys, we kind of befriended by the time we got out. We spent a lot of time together. Even though he says he didn't see him out for five minutes, it was a long time. So we're glad to have them all here. We're glad to see them again. And this time, I guess Chief Preacher and Ken Poosio give out the letters.
Thank you, Chairman. And I want to read you the thank you letter that he sent me. Asked him, what if I could read you? He was, okay. I got this on the Facebook page. He said, "I want to thank this time to thank each and every one from Pickens Fire and Rescue, along with EMS. I'm finally at home. I'm a coon hunter that had to be extracted and sent to the hospital. Lieutenant Paul Elder and his whole crew owe y'all my life, a debt that I can never repay. Just to update my situation, as I arrived at the hospital, outside Pumont Jasper, they ran several tests and quickly realized they did in fact have a heart attack in the woods. My propenone levels were elevated. I was then rushed by ambulance to feed him on a fanner, where I underwent two surgeries, one heart cath for exploratory purposes. I had my right coronary artery blocked 100%. My left was blocked 90%. So I went back into surgery to prepare them on Friday. I was released from the hospital Saturday after spending nearly a week in the hospital. My prognosis is very good. I'll be on meds for the rest of my life, but I didn't die on the side of Dr. Knut Creek, and I thank God for that. From the crew that cut the road for the side to side, to the crew that pulled me up, including my friends that stayed with me until the very end, I can't say thank you enough to everyone involved. I'll be home recoking for a couple of weeks, but back to work soon and later, I'll be able to enjoy the wilderness that almost, that almost took me. Without that putting people in my path, who knows the end of this story? It sure wouldn't, I'm sure it wouldn't be sitting. I wouldn't be sitting at home right now. Anyways, I appreciate the blood, sweat, and tears that y'all put for, for someone y'all didn't even know." And it ended with Lieutenant Elder. I'll get you that coon skin cap somebody soon. I got you. Thank you so much. So again, I'm going to present each member, this leaving with a unit, this member service award. But the team I'll be recognizing will be Ken Poosio, one of our newest rookies, been here maybe a month, two months. Emerald Goble, Michael Williams, square met firefighter Jim Weaver, square met Bob Crummer, Lieutenant Paul Elder, Captain Keith L. Rodd, and Chief Simmons, who could not be with us tonight. And I'll also be recognizing Mr. Russ Covington and Mr. Nicholas Brown for their job because these guys did praise them with their help of getting them out of there. That's eight, that's 10 folks, and it took them six hours. So you can imagine, you know, how, how we contained the incident this was. I was going off for Mr. Sandrich, not keen to say a few words, or present them if you'd like to.
It's not every day that you get to thank God that you're still alive. But it's not every day that you get to look across the room and you see the heroes that are standing in front of you. I'm here with my wife and grandson tonight in front of y'all people because of their sacrifice that they do every day. Not just the car accident down the road, but the coon hunter that was a mile and a half from his truck. And my two friends are my heroes. They'll forever be in my heart. They'll forever be in my life's heart. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I owe y'all my lives. It's a debt that I'll never be able to repay, but I love each and every one of you.
We heard Captain Elrod talking about Z-Rigs and lines. Earlier this year, we put everybody through rope training. And this is the one instance that it played off. If everybody, before we couldn't do that, so we're proud of that. And we learned also, we've got six or eight chapters before that we can give a bit of that next time. Stuff that we've identified can add. So with that said, if I could ask my crew to come forward, I called your name, Ken Poosio, if you will just come forward and face, face out.
Okay.
Emerald Goble. Michael Williams. Jim Weaver. Square met Bob Crummer. Jim Weaver's square met as well.
No, he's not.
Captain Keith L. Rodd. This is my team, and also I hope y'all will stand with them. Russ Covington and Nicholas Brown.
That was.
Michael Williams, this new service award, presenting to these guys, gals. This is presented to you for your contribution to the superior teamwork given during the special operations rescue incident that occurred on October 7th, 2025, that involved the rescue of a victim requiring the use of technical proficiency and executed rope operations and patient extraction. These actions were high-risk operations conducted through rugged terrain that required clearing and navigating challenging degree slopes. Your professionalism and commitment to operational readiness played a central role in the overall success of this rescue mission. Your contribution to this team effort brought great credit to yourself and to Pickens County Fire Rescue, issued a certificate from November by me, Chief Ken Preacher. Oh, God, well done. Yes, they're plenty. No, they're not. Captain Keith L. Rodd. This is my team, and also I hope y'all will stand with them. Russ Covington and Nicholas Brown. I appreciate this new service award presenting to these guys, gals. This is presented to you for your contribution to the superior teamwork given during the special operations rescue incident that occurred on October 7th, 2025, that involved the rescue of a victim requiring the use of technical proficiency and executed rope operations and patient extraction. These actions were high-risk operations conducted through rugged terrain that required clearing and navigating challenging degree slopes. Your professionalism and commitment to operational readiness played a central role in the overall success of this rescue mission. Your contribution to this team effort brought great credit to yourself and to Pickens County Fire Rescue, issued a certificate from November by me, Chief Ken Preacher. Oh, God, well done. Yes, they're plenty. No, they're not. Captain Keith L. Rodd. This is my team, and also I hope y'all will stand with them. Russ Covington and Nicholas Brown. I appreciate this new service award presenting to these guys, gals. This is presented to you for your contribution to the superior teamwork given during the special operations rescue incident that occurred on October 7th, 2025, that involved the rescue of a victim requiring the use of technical proficiency and executed rope operations and patient extraction. These actions were high-risk operations conducted through rugged terrain that required clearing and navigating challenging degree slopes. Your professionalism and commitment to operational readiness played a central role in the overall success of this rescue mission. Your contribution to this team effort brought great credit to yourself and to Pickens County Fire Rescue, issued a certificate from November by me, Chief Ken Preacher. Oh, God, well done. Yes, they're plenty. No, they're not. Captain Keith L. Rodd. This is my team, and also I hope y'all will stand with them. Russ Covington and Nicholas Brown. I appreciate this new service award presenting to these guys, gals. This is presented to you for your contribution to the superior teamwork given during the special operations rescue incident that occurred on October 7th, 2025, that involved the rescue of a victim requiring the use of technical proficiency and executed rope operations and patient extraction. These actions were high-risk operations conducted through rugged terrain that required clearing and navigating challenging degree slopes. Your professionalism and commitment to operational readiness played a central role in the overall success of this rescue mission. Your contribution to this team effort brought great credit to yourself and to Pickens County Fire Rescue, issued a certificate from November by me, Chief Ken Preacher. Oh, God, well done. Yes, they're plenty. No, they're not. Captain Keith L. Rodd. This is my team, and also I hope y'all will stand with them. Russ Covington and Nicholas Brown. I appreciate this new service award presenting to these guys, gals. This is presented to you for your contribution to the superior teamwork given during the special operations rescue incident that occurred on October 7th, 2025, that involved the rescue of a victim requiring the use of technical proficiency and executed rope operations and patient extraction. These actions were high-risk operations conducted through rugged terrain that required clearing and navigating challenging degree slopes. Your professionalism and commitment to operational readiness played a central role in the overall success of this rescue mission. Your contribution to this team effort brought great credit to yourself and to Pickens County Fire Rescue, issued a certificate from November by me, Chief Ken Preacher. Oh, God, well done. Yes, they're plenty. No, they're not. Captain Keith L. Rodd. This is my team, and also I hope y'all will stand with them. Russ Covington and Nicholas Brown. I appreciate this new service award presenting to these guys, gals. This is presented to you for your contribution to the superior teamwork given during the special operations rescue incident that occurred on October 7th, 2025, that involved the rescue of a victim requiring the use of technical proficiency and executed rope operations and patient extraction. These actions were high-risk operations conducted through rugged terrain that required clearing and navigating challenging degree slopes. Your professionalism and commitment to operational readiness played a central role in the overall success of this rescue mission. Your contribution to this team effort brought great credit to yourself and to Pickens County Fire Rescue, issued a certificate from November by me, Chief Ken Preacher. Oh, God, well done. Yes, they're plenty. No, they're not. Captain Keith L. Rodd. This is my team, and also I hope y'all will stand with them. Russ Covington and Nicholas Brown. I appreciate this new service award presenting to these guys, gals. This is presented to you for your contribution to the superior teamwork given during the special operations rescue incident that occurred on October 7th, 2025, that involved the rescue of a victim requiring the use of technical proficiency and executed rope operations and patient extraction. These actions were high-risk operations conducted through rugged terrain that required clearing and navigating challenging degree slopes. Your professionalism and commitment to operational readiness played a central role in the overall success of this rescue mission. Your contribution to this team effort brought great credit to yourself and to Pickens County Fire Rescue, issued a certificate from November by me, Chief Ken Preacher. Oh, God, well done. Yes, they're plenty. No, they're not. Captain Keith L. Rodd. This is my team, and also I hope y'all will stand with them. Russ Covington and Nicholas Brown. I appreciate this new service award presenting to these guys, gals. This is presented to you for your contribution to the superior teamwork given during the special operations rescue incident that occurred on October 7th, 2025, that involved the rescue of a victim requiring the use of technical proficiency and executed rope operations and patient extraction. These actions were high-risk operations conducted through rugged terrain that required clearing and navigating challenging degree slopes. Your professionalism and commitment to operational readiness played a central role in the overall success of this rescue mission. Your contribution to this team effort brought great credit to yourself and to Pickens County Fire Rescue, issued a certificate from November by me, Chief Ken Preacher. Oh, God, well done. Yes, they're plenty. No, they're not. Captain Keith L. Rodd. This is my team, and also I hope y'all will stand with them. Russ Covington and Nicholas Brown. I appreciate this new service award presenting to these guys, gals. This is presented to you for your contribution to the superior teamwork given during the special operations rescue incident that occurred on October 7th, 2025, that involved the rescue of a victim requiring the use of technical proficiency and executed rope operations and patient extraction. These actions were high-risk operations conducted through rugged terrain that required clearing and navigating challenging degree slopes. Your professionalism and commitment to operational readiness played a central role in the overall success of this rescue mission. Your contribution to this team effort brought great credit to yourself and to Pickens County Fire Rescue, issued a certificate from November by me, Chief Ken Preacher. Oh, God, well done. Yes, they're plenty. No, they're not. Captain Keith L. Rodd. This is my team, and also I hope y'all will stand with them. Russ Covington and Nicholas Brown. I appreciate this new service award presenting to these guys, gals. This is presented to you for your contribution to the superior teamwork given during the special operations rescue incident that occurred on October 7th, 2025, that involved the rescue of a victim requiring the use of technical proficiency and executed rope operations and patient extraction. These actions were high-risk operations conducted through rugged terrain that required clearing and navigating challenging degree slopes. Your professionalism and commitment to operational readiness played a central role in the overall success of this rescue mission. Your contribution to this team effort brought great credit to yourself and to Pickens County Fire Rescue, issued a certificate from November by me, Chief Ken Preacher. Oh, God, well done. Yes, they're plenty.
No, they're not. Captain Keith L. Rodd. This is my team, and also I hope y'all will stand with them. Russ Covington and Nicholas Brown. I appreciate this new service award presenting to these guys, gals. This is presented to you for your contribution to the superior teamwork given during the special operations rescue incident that occurred on October 7th, 2025, that involved the rescue of a victim requiring the use of technical proficiency and executed rope operations and patient extraction. These actions were high-risk operations conducted through rugged terrain that required clearing and navigating challenging degree slopes. Your professionalism and commitment to operational readiness played a central role in the overall success of this rescue mission.
Your contribution to this team effort brought great credit to yourself and to Pickens County Fire Rescue, issued a certificate from November by me, Chief Ken Preacher.
Oh, God, well done. Yes, they're plenty. No, they're not. Captain Keith L. Rodd.
This is my team, and also I hope y'all will stand with them. Russ Covington and Nicholas Brown. I appreciate this new service award presenting to these guys, gals. This is presented to you for your contribution to the superior teamwork given during the
special operations rescue incident that occurred on October 7th, 2025, that involved the rescue of a victim requiring the use of technical proficiency and executed rope
operations and patient extraction. These actions were high-risk operations conducted through rugged terrain that required clearing and navigating challenging degree slopes. Your professionalism and commitment to operational readiness played a central role in the overall success of this rescue mission. Your contribution to this team effort brought great credit to yourself and to Pickens County Fire Rescue, issued a certificate from November by me, Chief Ken Preacher. Oh, God, well done. Yes, they're plenty. No, they're not. Captain Keith L. Rodd. This is my team, and also I hope y'all will stand with them. Russ Covington and Nicholas Brown. I appreciate this new service award presenting to these guys, gals. This is presented to you for your contribution to the superior teamwork given during the special operations rescue incident that occurred on October 7th, 2025, that involved the rescue of a victim requiring the use of technical proficiency and executed rope
operations and patient extraction. These actions were high-risk operations conducted through rugged terrain that required[1017.12]
We're kind of the rules and regs on public hearings, just so that we make sure I'm not going to do it each time, since we have three separate ones. We'll go through and present the material. There's three different presenters. I'll present the budget. Mr. Reese will present on the road abandonment before we get to the road abandonment of public hearing. And then Mr. Wood will go over the aviation ordinance. So we'll have three different presenters present the information. We'll then go, after the information's been presented, open up the floor for public comments. If at the time you have a public comment you'd like to make, then you can step up to the podium, provide your name and your address, just that we've got there recorded for the minutes, and you'll have three minutes to state your position. Just for the order, one, we've got three public hearings, so the meeting could go on and on for hours if we don't, but then we'll move on to the next comment. And then we'll close that public hearing and move on to the next public hearing. So there'll be a separate public comment section for each public hearing. We do ask, one, that your comments be directed to the Board of Commissioners. There's sometimes where meetings can get turned out of order, where they want to start directing each other's rules and ground. But it be orderly and respectful. That's our rules. We understand that not everybody's going to have the same opinion, but at the same time, we've got to make sure that we maintain an orderly meeting. So that's the kind of the rules of the hearing. So if you'll just make sure that we follow those, I'll do my best to try to remind folks. And we'll set the time on the computer as we go through this. So we'll move first into the presentation of the 2026 budget. I know that we're giving the highlight overview of the budget for the 2026 proposed budget. This is the first of two public hearings that we'll go through the presentation. The second one will be on our December 1st work session date. We'll have a call meeting to do the public hearing for that at that time. And then the regular meeting in December, which is on the fifteenth.
The December meeting?
Fifteenth, yeah. December 15th will be when we actually vote on the budget. Anyone that wants to see the detailed line item budget, there's a public copy made available in the clerk's office that you can come by and view. We don't publish it on the site while it's in draft form until it's been voted on and adopted. So there is a public copy that's available. Just come by at any time during business hours, or if you need to schedule what time to meet with you, you'll have that key review. Like I said, tonight's going to be kind of bigger categories. We'll go through each of the bigger categories, and you have a chance to go through and see those specifics. Our mission is to, one, provide a transparent local government, which is one of the reasons we have the multiple public hearings, consistently protecting the soul of our community, working towards smart economic growth and the quality of life for those who use Pickens County or Holloman Destination. Just to give you an overview of the breakdown of how the chain of command, how the organization chart is in place. You can see that the Board of Commissioners is made up of two commissioners, Commissioner Tiffins and Commissioner Tatum. Myself serving as the chairman. As my role as chairman, part of the law that establishes the Pickens County Board of Commissioners indicates that that role also carries the duty of being the budget officer for the county. So that's the reason I'm the one making the presentation. I work closely with our finance staff to make sure that's the presenter. This shows you the breakdown of kind of how the, what's directly under the span of control of the Board of Commissioners. We have the internal operations side, external operations side, and the public safety operations side. Those are the ones that fall within our span of control. We also have boards, committees, partnership authorities. Those boards and authorities are appointed by the Board of Commissioners, but function within their own set of regulations that they follow. And then we've listed to the side other elected officials that are out there in the community as well. Just to give you an idea and overview, so that when you see the breakdown within the budget, you can see where those items fall within. If you look at the total number of positions, the 2026 budget is funding its 341 full-time employees, 55 part-time employees. The number on the seasonal intent looks high. One of the main reasons that number has changed a little bit is the elections. Poll workers all show up as intent employees, like all white cards, referees, officials for all sporting events. So those increased that number. In a historical context, up until about three years ago, they were 1099 employees that did poll working locations that didn't show up as temporary employees on the chart. But then when the laws have changed, that we make sure to update things. Didn't change the amount that's budgeted for those, but it did change the way that they show up on our board charts. So we always want to make sure to explain the rationale behind that. That 341 and 55 is to fund all those activities. So when I show you this chart, it's not just what's under our span of control, but also the other elected officials as well. That's including the sheriff's office. One of the unique things that does show up within that employees within Pickens County, but it's partially funded through an intergovernmental transfer judicial staff that work the accountability courts. They're through the sphere court, and they're for Pickens, Gomer, and Fenn. Pickens serves as the administrative cap, so all the employees fall within the Pickens County side of things, but Gomer and Fenn and reimbursed for their portions of their salaries. So that puts our head count slightly higher. If you would ever look at a head count at Pickens, Gomer, and Fenn and see our number looks different, but our populations are the same. One of the main reasons is those judicial employees that fall within us. There are four different budgets per se. One is your general fund. That's the larger budget that funds all the general maintenance and operation for the county. There are the enterprise funds, one specific to the water department, one specific to the airport. Those are both under enterprise-funded operations. And then we have a special fund, which is the E911. There are fees that are collected for 911. And you'll see a breakdown in a moment that that does cover a portion of theirs. And then you have the judicial grants, which I was describing just a moment ago, which is where it funds those different accountability courts operations. The proposed budget for 2026 under the general fund is $41,955,793. Enterprise funds combined total is 6.8 million, but if you look under those, it's $4 million for water and 2.7 for the airport, $2,763,249. The special fund for the E911 is $1,741,733. Judicial grants is $2,749,895. Just to show a breakdown of kind of where that comes from on the revenue side of things, looking at the revenues first. The 26 budget, the proposed of all taxes combined is $32,308,41, which is about 1.5, or almost 1.6, a little bit more than 1.5, $1,508,500 up from last year for all taxes combined. License and permits is $795. Intergovernmental, which is those transfers I was describing, $3,740,000. Charges for services, $4,597,000. Funds and forfeitures, $233,000. Interest income is $25,000. Other revenues, $260,000. That gives you that combined total. You can see the ones that did increase, the ones that did stay the same. That license and permits did increase by $51,000. Charges for services increased by $99,998, and then other revenues is increased by $5,000. Looking at the pie chart to the side, you can kind of see that breakdown of how those come in. If you look into the general fund expenditures, looking into the large categories of where those go. General government, $6,650,380. Judicial is $7,050,364. Public safety is $20,892,754. That is both the sheriff's office, probation, county marshal, public safety administration, fire and EMS, coroner's office, animal control and emergency management, all fall within that public safety category. Health and welfare is $277,000. Culture and recreation is $1,765,652. Housing and development is $816,643, kind of showing a breakdown. You can look at the pie chart on the side and you see 49.8, right at 50% fund the public safety side of things. General government, that's at 15.9. And that general government actually covers the chairman, my role, the board of commissioners, county clerk, elections, general administration, finance and accounting, payroll, legal, human resources, tax commissioner, tax assessor, general government buildings, project management, general admin as well. So that kind of gives you the, what makes up that category within general government. If you look into the highlights there that show kind of the breakdown of where those funds go, you can see that 66.66, almost 66.7%, what we'll call it, goes to personnel services and employee benefits. The majority is in payroll and all other personnel-related amounts that are necessary for staffing the office. 12.4% purchase contract services. That's going to be IT and another variety, and all the other services that are there. Supplies is at 7.79, other costs with 7.84. Other financial uses, which is 3.78. Debt services, .95, and capital outlays, .56. The majority of our capital outlay comes from our SPOS fund, which is separate from the general fund. So we do try to keep some designated into capital outlay, debt services within the general fund. Couple of highlights to go through. One is if you look at the chart in the bottom right, you can see we've had a record millage rate decrease from 24 to 25. We exceeded the recommended rollback rate and were able to reduce that rollback. We've had a total of general fund that's proposed to increase by 4.33% and while all the inflation and all that is in place, there's a uniform cost of living of $0.75 per hour for all full-time employees, which is a balanced budget. This is also the fourth consecutive year with no utilization of a tax anticipation note. It was used for many, many years prior. And a fund balance of $12,33,317, which is 30% of the operating revenue from 2025. So that way, there is a fund balance that is in place. It's consistent with the recommendations from. The special fund, just to kind of show the breakdown of that, there's charges for services. This is the E911 fund that I described before. Charges for services is $783,100. It's proposed to stay the same. There's going to be a lot of discussion at the Capitol on state law to change those fees that have been in place since 1984, I think, for the 911 fees, that if you go buy a cell phone or you pay your cell phone, they have a fee. That's a state issued thing that they're looking at trying to make some changes. That does not fund a full half of the 911 operations. It's designed to fund operations for 911 centers and throughout the state counties all over. Or having to then supplement with tax revenue to be able to provide 911 service. So you can see here the charges for services come in at $783,000, but the supplement that's required to make that operational is $958,000, maybe is in local funds. So that's one of the reasons that the ACCG has made that a top priority this year for as a statewide, just like you were trying to those fee changes. That shows you that difference from 26 to the 25. There's actually a slight reduction of $8,000 from the 25 budget to the 26 budget. We did have some upgrades on phone systems, computer systems last year that didn't roll into this year. So that was able to decrease slightly when it blew through. Enterprise funds on the water side, you've got the proposed on both the revenue and the expenditures, $4,83,947, and that is designed to operate the water system. You can see with the airport, the budget is $2,763,249. I know that if you look at the decrease from last year to this year with that $2,383,000, the majority of that, or actually all of that decrease came from the fund that was set up for the construction of the terminal, which has begun. So that's going to show up in the 2025 calendar year. We're receiving a $750,000 state grant that's going to offset a portion of that. And then there's reimbursements over the next four years that will total the, I think, $1.2 billion. And we discussed it in a couple of meetings ago, the exact dollar amount. So out of pocket or out of the bond for the airport, we should be in the $300,000 to $400,000 range at the time of completion. So we'll go at the time of the final reimbursement to receive. Those are both balanced budgets that are showing both the water and the airport balance with revenue and expenditures there. The judicial grant side of things, intergovernmental, that's where we receive from the other counties and from the grants that come in. That has increased from $3,77,000 in 2025 up to $3,791,000 in 2026, the proposed budget. And budgeted expenditures to match as well. And the judicial staff have been working on staffing to keep those accountability courts functioning and the numbers of probation officers to keep those in place. One of the things, like we said at the very beginning, is trying to be transparent. I know these are the general categories for the public hearing portion. And like I said before, those are specific to line item. I didn't bring the book in here, but you can see why it's not that an invaluable because we've been the next three hours going by my line. But anyone that does want to come through and review that, has access to that, you can just come out and ask to speak with the clerk, and you'll be able to have an opportunity to review the line item budget. If you want to see the 2025 line item budget, it is published on our website. And will be on the updated website still, under the finance reports category. You can go through and review the line item from 2025, and then you can compare that to the printing copy of the 2026 as well. So at this time, I would like to open up for any public comments, if what has any comments they would like to make. Well, with no public comments, do I have a motion to close the first public hearing on the budget?
Allo, a second.
I do move and a second. Any other discussion? No one in favor?
I have no.
Then, folks, we will close this public hearing and move on to the next. The next public hearing is a request for abandonment for a portion of Pettit Road. Mr. Charles Reese is going to help.
Good evening, Commissioners. What you have before you is the request for abandonment. Request has been made for Pickens County to formally abandon that portion of Pettit Road that runs from the intersection of Pettit Road and Upper Salem Church Road at the southeast corner of tax parcel 041177003 and the northeast corner of tax parcel 041174001 to that portion of Pettit Road at the southwest corner of tax parcel 041003 and the northwest corner of tax parcel 041175. This is verbatim from the applicant's request to abandon. That is the view of the abandonment request coming off of the intersection of Upper Salem Church Road and Pettit. On July 18th, 2025, the staff was notified of a gate installation, and the owner was notified as a result after we saw that there was in fact a gate installation. July 22nd, a notice was posted by staff owners consulted legal counsel. Then on August 19th, 2025, formal request made to abandon, to abandon the road that was submitted by the owner's law firm. Of course, with the legal framework we reference from the official code of Georgia, in section B1, where it is determined that a section of the county road system has for any reason ceased to be used by the public to the extent that no substantial public purpose is served by it or that its removal from the county road system is otherwise in the best interest, public interest, the county by certification recorded in its midst accompanied by a plaque or sketch. And after notice to property owners located thereon, after notice of such determination is published in the newspaper in which the sheriff's advertisements for the county are published once a week for a period of two weeks. And after a public hearing on such issue, may declare that section of the county road system abandoned. Thereafter, that section of road shall no longer be part of the county road system and the rights of the public and add to the section of road as a public road shall cease. Once we had all the information submitted to the staff, then we had reviews by the road department. They were to look at the connectivity and access impacts. We included the fire marshal and emergency services, emergency access verification. Then, of course, with the planning and development department, process confirmation and compliance. That's the review of the information received, notices that had to be sent out, sign posting, and also the advertisement in the newspaper. Here is the staff's recommendation. After reviewing the request and supporting documentation, staff concludes that abandoning the specified portion of Pettit Road from the intersection at Upper Salem Church Road to the section near the gate on parcels 041144 and/or 041144004 serves the best interest of Pickens County. The section primarily provides access to adjoining parcels and does not function as a critical public route. Its continued maintenance imposes unnecessary costs without significant public benefit. Approving this abandonment will reduce long-term obligations aligned with county policy and respect current property use. Staff therefore recommends that the Board of Commissioners approve the formal abandonment request.
Thank you, sir.
Very well.
We will move on to public comments. Public comments, just I know it was kind of a stand and go one at a time. As you come forward, if it's late night, if you represent something else, if you were, I didn't thought that is true.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Tyler Morrow with the Jackson Logrith. I'm here on behalf of the Port fellows as well as the various members of the Legends of Land LLC. I also have with me tonight several letters addressed to the board. You might have already received them. I have them sent in emails. I have them with me if you guys want them. Please let me know.
I believe they're all in our packets. I know it's time to receive them.
Excellent. Moving right along then. At the outset, I want to be clear that the petition itself is suffering from fundamental inconsistency. The county has already acknowledged it owns Pettit Road. If the petition is described as a public right-of-way or a public easement, these possessions can't both be truly legally stinking. If the county owns the road, it's not an easement. And if it truly were an easement, the county would not have been able to abandon earlier segment of the same road earlier this year as a public road. Even setting those concerns aside, abandoning the portion of Pettit Road is not in the best interest of the county taxpayers or their landowners most directly affected, including my clients, Legends of the Land and the Port fellows. This segment of Pettit Road provides the only access for members of Legends of Land and for the Port fellows to reach their properties. So I'm making the county's interest from almost certainly to costly and protracted litigation among private landowners over access rights. And while we're not here to threaten litigation against the county by any means, it is very likely the county will be drawn into such litigation as a necessary party. That is to say that all this is entirely voidable. Maintaining the status quo protects the county, protects the taxpayers, and protects the affected property owners from needless complication and litigation bills. For these reasons and in the interest of clarity, stability, and governance, we respectfully request the county decline to abandon this portion of the road. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. So I showed the, there, Mr. Johnson, here on behalf of the property owners, the Kilgore's. So I'm not really sure what the reference to easement is. I'm thinking, I was under the flag petition, so just.
Can you speak out, please? I can't. I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. So representing the Kilgore's here. I, I'm not sure, just for the record, what the records to the easement was. That's a prior council initiative. We're just simply, it's a straightforward request for a formal abandonment of a public county road. The Kilgore's do own all property located there on the portion of Pettit Road that's proposed to be abandoned. Notably, notably to the Kilgore's knowledge, the county has never maintained this portion of the road. I mean, prior to this, you wouldn't even know that it was a county road. There's no sign. There's never been any maintenance. And it's essentially just a dirt road that the Kilgore's have actually put gravel on. So a portion with gravel, rest of it is just dirt roads. So it definitely doesn't look like a county road. So whenever the county put them on there, they said they had to remove the gate. That was the first that they were even aware, the first time they were even aware that it was potentially on the rip. As the prior person they have noted to, I'm not sure if you continue going down Pettit Road, whether or not that portion has previously been formally abandoned or not. But only if there is a gate there, and so we're just asking for the abandonment up to the point of that gate. So essentially, as of right now, if the county were, or any members of the county were to have to use that portion, if they were cutting through, or cutting through the Kilgore's property on this county road, they hit the gate, they just have to turn around and go the other way. So essentially, what they're asking you to do is for the county to step in and actually have to start maintaining this road so that the neighbors can use it, whereas they actually do have access points on the other end to Pettit Road. So it's not going to cut off their access. They have access to it. There was a gate there up until a few months ago. Obviously, they were getting a little crap to that. I mean, so. We don't believe that there's any real general public use of this road. We don't believe, certainly no substantial public purpose being served by the road, which is what the law says. So we don't believe that the county should now have to step in, given that there is no general public purpose to foot the bill to maintain that road when the neighbors who have other access are the only ones utilizing, trying to utilize the portion that we're asking to give them. So on behalf of the Kilgore's, I think we're going to just act like a request that we do abandon this portion of road that's being served by essentially no one but one or two neighboring owners that have other access.
Thank you, sir. Almost like both have you rehearsed it to exactly three minutes on the dot, because that is about speaking.
Good evening. I'm B. W. Parcell with a 267 Pettit Road. I am a majority owner of Legends of Land. And I guess the south part of the Pettit Road that was recently abandoned. What the previous council said is absolutely enough truth. That gate has been there for four years, and we've been using that property. We've been using that for main address for four years. There is no physical way you can drive a vehicle from the other side to get up on my property. Legends of the Land has zero access from the other end because there's other neighbors that prevent them, so they don't go all the way to the other end. They own just the north side. And the only access they have is through Upper Salem. We just put in $150,000 worth of improvements. Based on a few months ago, when you guys, when you abandoned the road, we came out there. Ashley went out there, out of camp, remember it. I'm forgetting the name of it. Charles went out there, and there was another person that went out there. And we went and they assured me that that wasn't going to be closed. They don't maintain that road, so that doesn't cost the county any money. But the Kilgore's have always known that's a public road because that was used for 50 years prior by the previous owners. I have neighbors sitting here that have walked that road. Sometimes they know it's been a public road. All, I don't know why it's always such a big topic, this Pettit Road. All this is, is to try to keep people from not accessing their property. But we will have zero entrance as Legends of the Land. There is no way, if physically the only way it touches Pettit Road is at that section you want to close. Otherwise, you have the Forsites, who own the two parcels, and then Randy Lucas, who just bought the Lewis house. There's three properties. So Pettit Road is not, there's no way to drive through Pettit Road down there. And even if it was, we have five different lots. That would, that would restrict us on what we can do with our property. We can't bring power in. We can't do anything. We want to develop that land. We want to put some sort of shelter right there at near that gate. And that is for us, our personal use, that we can work along with county and it's plan that we want to do. For the, there's too many animals on the streets. There's too many animals that they can't go anywhere, and that's what we want to do with our land. And we just can't seem to do anything because the Kilgore's tried to stop us for four years. This is the fourth time they've blocked us. This is not just once. This isn't just, oh, this just happened for the first time. This is the gate. No, they've blocked us out several times. They've threatened us several times. They told us Josh Dickens was out there and promised him that the thing would be locked. We were on the phone with Josh. We didn't, we don't know what's going on. We're just trying to live our lives in peace, and we just can't get a break. But it is very important to us that that road stays open. We wouldn't put this money into it. We wouldn't be part of this community too, but what good is our property? We have 270 acres. We have two hundred seventy acres, and I can't get to my land? And then my northern neighbors, uh, Matt Kinzer, I talked to him, just this coincidental before we got the notice here, he has no access, he has no access to get to his land from up there, so we're talking about coming through it, and the only way we got is through upper sale. So those are concerns for more than just me and Legends. I mean, that whole area could be affected if we don't, if we try to close that road, it's going to affect a lot of people.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, I'm Scott Kilgore. First off, I don't think Petted Road's ever been a county road. County's never maintained it, county's never owned it, there's never been any, any ownership in Petted Road for the county. And if the road's going to be open, it needs to be open all the way through. It don't need to be just open just across my property. They've got other access points off of Upper Salem Church Road that you've got their own driveway. I think that's what they should do.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Steve Baker, one sixty eight Petted Road. Uh, I am against closing the road. As far as I know, the road's been there a hundred years. This county does not maintain it, we're not asking for county to maintain. We, it does give us an emergency exit if anything ever happens at the other end. Now apparently, unbeknownst to me, part of it has been declared private. That's all another discussion to have. Uh, earlier it said signage was put up? No. I was told it's been made private, period. As far as this goes, it's all part of that too. It's a road that's been there forever. Yes, we've walked through there, no, you can't drive your car through there, but there was a time you could get a, a four-wheel drive through there. I could certainly get out of my four-wheeler if something happens and there's a tornado on the other end of, you know, the road, I could get to town that way. That's all I got to say. There was no notice given to us about any closure in this road. It's been there forever, keep it what it is.
Thank you, sir. You coming?
Yeah.
Next.
Hello, Eric Catarca, one fifty eight Petted Road. Um, I used to walk that road fairly regularly every week or two. Um, I also used to walk the parcel that was previously abandoned, and I did not see any notice about that abandonment proposal. And I was even walking it after it was abandoned until I was informed that it was private property and I could only walk it. Um, that's always been a public road, it's always been open. My wife and I used to walk in it back when she was still around, um, before she had her hip surgery. Maybe it doesn't serve a lot of public purpose, but it's one of the few places you could go for a long walk and, and not have to worry about traffic. Um, and sometimes I even would walk as far as Crowborough or the, go up the other side, and it's like four miles shorter to walk through there than it is to, to go around. Um, I'm upset that it's all, that the piece that has been privatized, has been privatized, and I certainly don't want any more of it to disappear. And I also am concerned that if Mr. Parkbello and his LLC, any development back there, our end of Petted Road is not really suitable for access, and it's currently completely inaccessible to him, that's his, it's only access to his property and anything that he develops in there is through the, the piece that you're considering abandoning now. Uh, there are some serious issues with our end of Petted Road with the creeks, and I don't think it can be made passable or made accessible to him. And even if it could be, um, if there's any major development going back there, um, it would be wrong for all of that traffic to be put on the hard end of Old East of Petted Road. Some, the other end needs to be kept open as well, and probably needs to be the primary access point because it's far more accessible and far more improvable, um, than our end. Our end has got creeks alongside of it, creeks running across it, it's in the creek for part of the, part of the distance, and it would be prohibitively expensive for the county or the property owners to develop entry from our end as compared to the other end. The other end is, is, uh, relatively clear, relatively open, and it's always been a road and, uh, I'm sorry if you said so, but the surveys that are on record with the deeds over there, that leaves a right-of-way for the road, um, the surveys for Mr. Parkbello's property had a right-of-way for the road before it was abandoned, and I think it's still recorded that way. Um, it's always been a public right-of-way. We tried to close it back in two thousand four, and, uh, the marshal came out and told us we had to open the gate back up, uh, because there were some people who wanted to ride horses and stuff back there. We hope that's for public access, it's always been a public right-of-way and should remain. So, um, if it's not a road through portions of it, it should be a, a park and or a nature trail or something so that pedestrians have a, a safe place to walk. Uh, and that should be open all the way through.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to.
That, that's about all I, I don't have to say any of the setup. We shouldn't be, we shouldn't be closing off public access, and it's not costing the county any money, they're not actually maintaining it. But it's, uh, it's always been a road, it's always been open to the public and should continue to do so.
Thank you, sir.
Because of Corso, I have a thirty-six Petted Road on the last Corso for, uh, uh, Legend of Land's property and, uh.
Yes.
I mean, I can get access all the way to my property, and then after that, you can't get through the road. So it's, well, why not let the Kilgore's have their end, there's nothing else down there for their property. I mean, it's not good for anything else. I can't go that way right now, it's private, so either open the whole thing or, yeah, I'll make, you don't open the whole thing, it's kind of worthless for the rest of us.
Well.
It's county road.
That's okay.
That's, that's not a real purpose for it, that I can see.
Can I beg you back and sit, stay seated, please?
Yes.
Um, that is, you, they can reach that property back there from the Petted side, um, and not just that upper sale inside, and if you're going to close off, you know, his part of it, who has access to it at that point? One person, one group. And talking about just wanting to be left alone.
Yes, man.
Keep, keep directed toward us.
Well, yeah, um, at being left alone, you know, I think they deserve their privacy as well. So, if only one person can use it, you know, if they're not going to open the whole thing, and I'd be curious too about the signage maybe being on the other end, uh, for the abandonment of that part of it, where was it? If they didn't see it, and we didn't see it, being right on the other side.
That's it. Very well.
Any other thoughts?
All right, that's who we can.
So now as we get ready to close the public hearing, I will make just a public comments. I know we had a public hearing similar to this for the, the other portion that was abandoned leading in July.
Was there a sign put up for that?
There was, we have a photo of it. It touches the property where the abandonment was, like this one, if you look on Upper Salem, it sits where you can see.
I saw that one, but I never saw anything.
Yeah, I never saw a sign when I walked.
It, it was a, a sign that was placed further back, I know it was a, a part of the file that was provided to us, showed a picture of the sign that was put into the ground and that our public.
Some ways.
So we did, we did go through a similar process as what we're doing tonight, when, when that woman was there, there, uh, and, and had a public key thing at that point in time, but, um, this, uh, unless you guys want to see anything on the map, certainly things the old, uh, all entertaining motion.
I'm making notes. A second motion collection, a second, any discussion, questions from the board? All in favor?
Yep. We will close this portion of the public hearing, it is denied and on the agenda that, uh, the board has the option of, of taking up or taking at that point in time, and then we will get to that as we go through the agenda. Now we come to public hearing number three, this is an airport ordinance, regulatory standards, standards of operations, uh, at the airport.
PPTA, Mr. Wood. Awesome.
Pete.
Peter, who is? So this is a public hearing for a new chapter thirteen of the ordinances that the board is going to be taking up for consideration in a little bit of time. Um, it is a new chapter, this is a public hearing for, uh, there's an important date that basically sits in the, uh, the title of the context for all of this, and that date is May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. That's when the, uh, uh, Pickens County Airport Authority, uh, was dissolved by the General Assembly upon signature by the governor. At that particular point in time, on May thirteenth, the board commissioners assumed all responsibility for the operations of the airport, assumed all contracts, assumed everything basically. So this ordinance is basically being considered in the context of the board's responsibility to have stewardship over, uh, the airport. Uh, there are three pieces of this ordinance, general provisions, regulatory standards for operations, and leases. The general provisions basically display the empowerment from the board's, uh, ability to, to adopt this as is derived from the Georgia Constitution, their intent, their objectives, the responsibilities of the board and of the Pickens County Government and of the Airport Department, which is part of the Pickens County Government. Uh, there is a division on enforcement against violations, and there are legal status provisions, which basically, um, prohibit the ordinance from conflicting with any superior authorities such as federal law or state law, including regulatory provisions at those two levels. The operational, uh, standards, there are standards for the county, standards for users, ground vehicles, aircraft operations, aircraft fueling operations, fire prevention and, and protecting. There's nothing in here that's not pretty standard in terms of the types of things that go on in an airport and what's regulated at an airport. Um, this was, uh, this was derived from, uh, looking around, uh, the state at various counties that have done this sort of thing. There was nothing that was basically co-opted from the county, and in entirety, it's comes from different pieces. We feel better about things like this when we look at other counties and look at what's working elsewhere and the fact that they've been around the farm, have good experience. And we have leases, which has standards for all leases and additional standards beyond the general standards for ground leases. And from the BLC standpoint, it's, it's duties to operate, manage, and regulate the airport, protect and preserve, uh, and further the public safety, health, and welfare and quality of life in Pickens County. The Airport Authority, the scope of their consideration was basically in the airport itself. However, for the board commissioners, as the governing authority for this county, the scope of their responsibility is for the entire county and the welfare of every person that lives here, every person that visits here, every business that's inducted here. So the board basically has the broader, um, playing field to have to look at and consider when it basically makes decisions about the airport. Um, there might be a reaction that says, well, why would the general public care about something as narrow as the airport? Well, we tell you, based on a couple of things that we'll, we'll talk about later, that the general public, um, should care a great deal about this airport and how it operates. And so therefore, that is a, a driving perspective that the board commissioners has, that the Airport Authority did not have. So, in the context of what the board commissioner's primary duty is with regard to the citizens, the visitors, the businesses, and everyone here, there's basically four key things. Now, the board commissioners inherited a complaint that was filed with, uh, the Federal Aviation Administration, uh, concerning certain activities that, uh, are alleged to, to basically have occurred in, in violation of federal standards. That's inherited from before, it's ongoing, we at the county consider it to be broad in scope, we consider it to be, to have a lot of depth, we consider it to have some problematic aspects, uh, and the difficult part about the complaint is it's a grant assurance complaint, which means that violations could theoretically cause clawback of grant money. And there's a lot of grant money that's been received here relative to the size of the county and the size of the airport. So, a very detailed and rigorous review is underway. This work would have to have been done anyway, but it's been accelerated and intensified by the fact that this complaint was inherited. And so the review so far has found a lot of things, a lot of good things that was, that were done at the airport, that's produced positive results, and has found some things that, some actions that were done that would, were non-compliant because they were prohibited actions. It's also found some things what we call non-compliant non-actions whereby an action that was required by law was not done. So we're dealing with handful of votes, yes, we have the four things, with basically the BLC through this ordinance to nullify the effects of past non-compliance, eradicate current compliance, deter future, uh, non-compliance, and encourage future compliance. We basically get all of this achieved, then, then this airport will be a, 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 a great, a great airport, um, that everybody, whether they be a tenant, a pilot, or just a resident here or visitor here, will be proud of and will be beneficial to them. Um, looking for the best outcome for the, for the pickings public, best outcome for the users, uh, and best airport possible. This gives the board of commissioners, I mean, the board of commissioners, uh, over the last few months has enacted a lot of changes to the ordinances. They have adopted new ordinances, this is the next in line, and ordinance give the board commissioners as a lawful means to regulate, um, uh, what the subject of the chapter is. And so the board of commissioners has this means here. They're spelled out specifically in the ordinance, um, and if it's adopted, they'll be available to the board, uh, to, to, uh, be able to utilize. This is in contrast to a airport authority situation whereby the staff may have administrative rules at their disposal, but that's basically it. This is a much more powerful, uh, provision, and we know that the board is committed to applying this in a fair and lawful and thoughtful manner. Uh, the last thing I'll say about this is, uh, we have the good fortune of having, uh, the Atlanta office of Freeman, Mathis, and Gary help us with this in a substantial fashion, and they made a, a big difference, and we're appreciative of their offer.
Thank you, sir.
This time I'll open up to any public comments.
Hey, my name is Gary Simonegan, uh, end of, uh, one seventy-seven Sawyer Lake in Jasper. Um, the Airport Authority, I'm not sure what authority they ever had because the county was always the sponsor of the airport, so always really, uh, is where the, the buck ended, uh, and stopped when it came to any of these provisions. I recognize that the Airport Authority really didn't have much authority when it came, uh, except for, you know, making recommendations. They had no checking account, they had no credit rating. Um, it's, it was the sort of thing is where since they weren't the sponsor, the buck always stopped with the county and, and, and the board. So I'm not sure what's in chapter thirteen, but as far as compliance goes, that's, that gives us to a, to a, kind of a double-edged sword. One part of compliance is, is very important to the county because if it meant losing grant assurances or having federal or state funds recalled that were already paid, yeah, that's a problem. But the other part is what, what, um, what regulations, and, and this wasn't said, was what regulations are, uh, are really not, are we in non-compliance with? Uh, we've discussed, the commissioner and I have discussed a couple of these things where we are fully in compliance, and yet the rumor mill was circulating that we were going to lose grant assurances, uh, over. lose grant assurances over over an opinion stated in a in a letter. And I've got actually two letters, and they say exactly the same thing. There is no fear of loss of funding. So I think before we willy-nilly accept Chapter thirteen provisions, we really need to differentiate which of these provisions are affecting the grant assurances and the financial stability of our very, very important because we have a debt there that we've incurred, and which of them are just, you know, are just become noise. Because that's that's to vote on something without knowing which of these provisions, what the violations are, what the things that are not in compliance are, it's kind of silly to be making a a a general vote on it. I'm in favor of being in compliance. I'm also in favor of of selectively looking at those issues and and key these in on what's good for the community and then what's good for the pilots and the and the airport and the pilots and the airplane owners.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? What about?
None, as we close the the public hearing, I know that the Board has has met with staff and has received copies to be able to review what was what was in there so that they could take a look at the two different things that they are. I think that codifying rules and regulations shows that we are able to hold ourselves accountable, that not only are we saying that we're setting a rule that people have to follow, we're setting a rule that we have to follow and that all of our staff have to follow, and defines different things that prevent personal opinion and personal gain or personal anything for viewers to be able to come into play when it comes to the leases category or the selection of anybody. So it gives us a set of standards that are that are codified and that we have to hold ourselves to. So it's one of those that an ordinance that that puts us in a position to be held accountable more so than it puts the others in a position to be held accountable. So it's an additional, we we did so with Code of Ethics a year and a half, two years ago, when we passed an ordinance on ethics that holds us to a standard that's different. We've done it on a couple of other items, and this is another another opportunity to to follow that same that same path, and it has the ability to to consider that.
So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing following airport ordinance regulatory standards.
Subtle. Second.
Subtle. Any discussion or questions?
No.
With none, all in favor?
No.
None opposed, a motion taken. Thank you all for a correct point. Tell the meeting's going along when one person at the time turns to the restroom because we're going to the restroom. The the meeting. The the next item is our consent agenda, item nine. We did have three different proclamations during this past month. The Veterans Day proclamation was signed on October the twenty-ninth, honoring that November the first. I apologize, I skipped the order here. The first in in the stack that I have is the Veterans Day that I had flipped over to right. So it was signed on October the twenty-ninth, but it was honoring that November eleventh was Veterans Day, Pickens County encouraging everyone to participate. The second proclamation from this month was also done on that same date, on October the twenty-ninth, honoring November first is National Literacy Day in Pickens County. And we had a third on October the twenty-ninth that was an Indian, National American Indian Heritage Month for the month of November, honoring that in Pickens County as well. The Daughters of the American Revolution worked really closely with the community and present us with numerous, numerous proclamations throughout the year. And this time, they came with with three to to work, and they they did a tremendous amount of work to make sure that we had a crowd that showed up for Veterans Day. So those three are all being read onto the record and placed into the.
Litigation was in root force.
You two are voting items as the full Board's. Next item is the old business. This first is consideration and approval of airport airport lease issues. I'm going to ask Mr. Wood again if he could present just a a brief overview on that and that this was an item that we had discussed from the first one, and then we will.
Yes, the review that I indicated is ongoing with regard to the proposed ordinance that you have in front of you. Turned out some issues related to what I would term as the H eleven lease, which is a a lease of hangar, ground lease at at the airport. The this part of the review was looked at very carefully by the Regulatory and Litigation Specialty Firm, Robbins, Robbins, Ollie, Bell, and Fonte, Littleville in Atlanta, and you have your recommendation, their recommendation for treatment in front of you in the form of a resolution that they prepared.
So the resolution, I know that that got uploaded for you guys to review, is a resolution showing that there is not an effective written lease governing the H eleven, which is referred to throughout the resolution, as cops Tennessee on the property. That lease was not in place, indicating that the Board of Commissioners determining that the continuation of that tenancy is not in the county's interest. So therefore, the resolution has been provided and presented from the Council would show that the Chair and Board of Commissioners valid to direct and provide notice to the tenant, that the Board of Commissioners' decision to terminate this Tennessee on the property and the termination shall be effective ninety days from the date of the notice of termination, and that we deliver the property to the county within thirty days of that termination date. That would also require within thirty days of that time period that any improvements on the property be removed and we deliver the property to its land to the county. You've got a copy of the resolution before you and the recommendation from the Council referring to that tract of land, and I will entertain a motion to approve the adoption of the resolution authorizing the Chair to act on its fat.
Motion to per. A second motion.
Any discussion or questions? With none, all in favor? You notice this resolution does stand in place for all three signatures.
All done.
And we'll make sure that Lisa has that go in the final board package. Next item under old business is consideration and approval of airport fencing. I know that in the July meeting, we have discussed the proposed grant from the state where the grant, in order to do a fencing project, the State of Georgia was providing a seventy-five percent match to be able to do the fencing project within one year. At the time, we had several pending variables in terms of expense that we were looking at before, and so we had neglect or we had opted during that meeting to reject that grant offer from the state. The state has contacted us again before they reallocate the funds to another airport throughout the state. It is a part of our three-year capital improvement plan following this year. I know that our first year, we were trying to make sure that we got the terminal underway, which construction has begun on. They have called and stated that they wanted to give us one more chance because they needed it as an item within our capital improvement plan for consideration. Essentially, it would provide seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the funding to be able to provide the fencing around the property of the airport, and we give that ability for that to move forward in one year rather than spreading this out over a four-year, three-phase process. And they'd ask us to if we wanted to reconsider that. That's the reason that I put it back in their old business to bring it back before you guys after meeting with GDOT discussing it. They they granted us through the the midpart of this week to give them notice if we had any other determination. Spoke with with staff and spoke with engineers, spoke with our finance department, looking over the materials for the bond that was there. There is the availability of using the bond that's currently in place for the construction project. We are also still working with neighboring property owner through the fence agreement at a meeting with them and GDOT just this past week so that we can continue to try to go back and forth with GDOT to get an approval of an official written through the fence agreement, so that way we could have that factored in as the fence was being installed if we're able to get that agreement in place to where GDOT and FAA both felt that it is acceptable. Property owners, like I said, we've we've had a great line of communication and have been working with him pretty close to try to meet their their requirements on an existing forty-year, forty-plus-year verbal agreement, but it never was put in written, and now they're they're calling into question to make sure that it does get tough fun. So want to bring that back before you. I would, on behalf of staff, like to make the recommendation, and and I guess I'll do so in the form of a motion so that it can get to the floor for a vote, but I would like to make a motion that we do accept the grant that's being offered from the State of Georgia for the fencing project, that we provide seventy-five percent of the funding for the fencing to take place and work with our finance director on the utilization of the bond for the local match requirement.
I'll say it back.
Can you read it?
I'll read that.
I can say it a second time. As long as Lisa can read it, but we're okay. So I have a motion in a second, and then I'll open that up for discussion or questions. So.
Can you repeat?
Regularly can. Any discussion, questions? All right, with that, all in favor? And with no opposed, we will enrode find GDOT acceptance, so if we can get that progress moving.
That's all.
All right, so next, under new business, is the first item is consideration and approval of the squash bond resolution. As you know, the election was a couple weeks ago, this lost item did pass in Pickens County. There is a resolution, however, that we have to do because there was a a mention within there about bonds that would be able to take points, so there is a resolution stating that the Pickens County Board of Commissioners hereby resolve by the authority of the same that the election resulted in favor of the continuation of the sales and use tax and the issuance of the debt by an affirmative vote of a majority of the qualified voters voting in the election, that the continuation of the sales tax, use tax, and the issuance of debt have been authorized as required by law, and we have the attached results as the exhibit that shows the results of the election leaving from the the election's office within the exhibit that you have, I think it was fifty-eight percent that were in figure. So the resolution's requirement basically so we can move forward into that bond process to work with bond counsel, and then we were also preparing an RFQ to give a finance, financial consultant that will work with the placement of that fund, and then we'll bring that back before the Board for a vote once that financial consultant has been engaged so that they can read that information. I know that in the original resolution for the call for the election, there were some parameters as to what the bond could not exceed in terms of both the dollar mind in the interest, so the financial consultant will be provided with that information, and assuming that it can meet those criteria, we'll have one to bring back before the Board. So this is just a resolution stating that it passed and it will attach with the resolution from the Board of Elections indicating the same. With that, do I have a motion authorizing me as the Chair of Board of Commissioners to sign this resolution?
Subtle. Second.
With a little bit in the second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
No.
All right, next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of a facility services agreement between the Red Cross and Pickens County. This is from the. This is from the, sorry, I'm trying to keep my stacks of papers still to read. This is from from the Emergency Management Agency. This is to have the agreement in place with Red Cross to serve as the. I'll go and read the specific light, which is why I was trying to find it. So that on October the twenty-eighth, Representative for Pickens County EMA, Director Rick Cross of Urban Health and Fire Marshal's Office inspected the community center located at thirteen twenty-nine Camp Road to use as a disaster shelter. It was discovered that the facility use agreement had not been signed during that time, and so this is to give the ability for the Red Cross to execute the management of that during the event of a disaster, so that they can open up a disaster shelter at that point in time. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion that we execute the agreement with your Red Cross so that we have that in place in the event that we need them following a disaster.
Motion to per. Second motion.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? None opposed, who cares?
Next item is a consideration and approval of the scrap tire abandonment reimbursement program. This is something that we present annually where the EPD provides basically a grant funding. The EPD agrees to reimburse local government up to six thousand and ninety-seven dollars for the scrap tire abandonment project. This is so that we can open up for a period of time for receiving scrap tires, and we will get reimbursed by EPD for doing so. Do I have a motion authorizing me as Chair to sign this agreement with the EPD?
Subtle. I'll say it.
With a moment and a second, any discussion or questions?
No.
None, all in favor? None opposed, who cares?
Move that turn in. And next is consideration and approval of a deannexation request from the City of Jasper. We received a letter from the City of Jasper on October the twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. There's a notice of a pending deannexation request for parcel zero four one zero six two that's owned by Rainy Day Development LLC, Mr. David Chouse, and it's a request to deannex six point oh seven acres located seventeen hundred and twenty-five feet west of the southwest corner of West Trick Street, Highway five fifteen. The subject property is currently zoned as City of Jasper C two, General Commercial District in undeveloped, and that the advocate intends to develop the property for commercial use in the future, using Pickens County Highway Business as the zoning district. They have a meeting scheduled on November the twenty-fifth before City Hall or before the Jasper Planning Commission, that will then go before the Council on December the first, if if approved there. In order for that to do so, they have asked that we entertain a vote as to accepting the parcel back into the county as a defense parcel from the City of Jasper. Do I have a motion for approval for accepting the annexation back into the county?
Motion to per. Second motion.
To a motion and a second, any discussion or questions?
With automatic resound or sound as highway business, or we have to go through that.
It would get, it would come over as the the match zoning, so since it's commercial now, it would come over as highway business territory, which it does not create an island, it does not create any kind of an issue, and it's consistent with neighboring property where it's at. So that would be what it would condense.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? And then a third, who cares? Welcome back to the committee, sir.
Next item on the agenda is the consideration and approval of the Pedic Road abandonment request. And I believe it's a couple of things that we did have earlier in tonight's meeting. We do have it placed on here in case you guys feel comfortable with the vote with this time, or if you would request tables to reduce either one. I will open up the floor for a motion at this time.
Take a motion that we proceed with the abandonment, that section's better cooked. I'll say it.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Proceed with the abandonment. Any discussion or questions? With none, all in favor? None opposed? We will proceed with the abandonment.
Next item on the agenda is the consideration and approval of the airport ordinance, regulatory standards for operations at the airport. And as we mentioned before during the public hearing, you guys had a chance to review those as they were provided. And without any questions, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the ordinance, Chapter thirteen, and that'll aviation.
Motion to per. Second motion.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion or questions? We have none, all in favor? None opposed? Who cares? Also requires signature for these.
Next item on the agenda is the removal of N six seven two three A and M one six one five zero T from the Pickens County Airport. I'm going to ask Bill again for the third time if he has any comments that he would like to to provide. if he has any comments he would like to provide on that.
The review that's conventioned a few times also turned up the fact that that aircraft was a transportation ship. They sail in spring, are deemed to be unworthier at the airlet condition. That would make it be considered the, or at least the presence of, in regards to the hangar and Gregory, via an aeronautical usage that's prohibited. So, basically have a motion to consider taking action on that. As you give FAA regulations, and if you've signed that ordinance and it became involved in the last signature, so you use them as well.
Next, so what we have before us, there's two planes identified as N6723A and N6150 present at the airport in derelict condition. From staff's observation, have not been airworthy for a significant period of time. What I would like to request is a motion and a vote to order the removal of the aircraft from the airport and give them till the date of December the 3rd at 6:00 PM, so that they have time in order to do so. And also authorizing me as Chairman to take any action authorized by Chapter 13 that would support that FAA regulation deemed necessary to cause the removal of the two aircraft and impose any consequences if applicable if it's deemed necessary if they refuse to remove. So that is the motion, a two-part motion that I might put before.
I'll make the motion. All right. My second.
Motion and a second. Lisa's really hoping I can hand her this written out, so. Do you have any discussion or questions?
Yep.
With none, all in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries. We want to roll forward with getting that provided.
All right, next is our action items. The first is the approval of minutes from both a regular meeting and executive session on October the 20th, 2025. I know that Mr. Thompson has provided copies of both sets of minutes for you to review prior to coming in. And if so, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes as presented.
Second motion.
I have a move and a second. Any discussion or questions? None, all in favor?
Uh huh.
None opposed?
All right, next item on the agenda is the reappointment of Todd Thane to the Bartow Pickens Joint Development Authority. Mr. Thane has served on that authority, and has done a fantastic job. Recently, a motion to reappoint him to serve for a term that would expire on December of 2031 on the joint authority. Do I have a motion?
Salute. My second.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? None, all in favor?
Uh.
None opposed? Who cares?
Next item is to appoint Mr. John Lloyd Weaver, who serves on our development authority, to also serve on the Bartow Pickens Joint Development Authority with a term expiring on December 2031. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed? Who cares?
The next is to, a motion to reappoint Todd Thane on to the Development Authority. Todd has served as the Secretary Treasurer for a number of years and has done a fantastic job. This would reappoint him to continue serving through September the 8th, 2029. Do I have a motion for one just today?
Salute. Second, sorry.
Move in a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Uh huh.
None opposed? Who cares?
Next is the reappointment of Ms. Michelle Tidwell, who has served the unexpired term of another member, so she's only been on for a short period of time to the Pickens County Development Authority. Michelle's term would expire on September the 8th. Do you have a motion to appoint Ms. Tidwell?
Question for. Second motion.
A motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, a motion carries. I know as we come next month, we will have one that is not requesting a reappointment. So we will have one more member of the Development Authority that we were working through the list of those that have requested to be considered. And we will get that appointment ready before our December meeting. So we'll have that one here in the future.
All right, with that, it leads us to our guest comments. Open up the floor for guest comments.
Yes, sir.
Just a question. You had a lease compliance issue on the town property that basically now, because the lease is out of compliance, it's an eviction. Am I reading, did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, oversimplified form.
Is there a reason that you chose that path as opposed to, I don't know, renegotiating the lease?
It's open for public comment, it's not a Q and A debate.
Okay, I just wondered if that was part of.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments?
Thank you for bearing witness, that was a long bit.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel.
Salute. My second.
Move in a second. All in favor?
Uh huh.